Well, I've got seven o'clock. We'll go ahead and get this meeting going. I'd like to call the meeting, committee planning commission, May 11, 2021. Dan, if you give us the invocation, please.
Lord, we ask for your presence and your blessing tonight on our community and on our nation. Be with our leaders and our volunteers as they serve our community. Give them wisdom as they make decisions to keep us safe. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I'll do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Dan, would you the roll call, please?
Ted?
Here.
Scott?
I'm here.
Bryce?
Here.
Tucker? Tucker, you're muted.
Tucker's not on yet.
Tucker's not on yet.
Yeah, Tucker is not on yet.
Okay. Rick?
Here.
Mark?
Here.
You all receive a copy of the minutes of the April 13th meeting. Is there any additions or corrections? If not, they'll stand as presented. We have no old business, so we'll move right into new business. First item is a site plan review. Scott Colina seeks the planning commission's approval to open a furniture restoration business, Baltic wood shop and restoration in a garage behind Hex Restaurant, 610 East Park Avenue. Scott, are you with us? I don't see him. Do I have a motion to table this? If he shows up later in the meeting, we can come back to it.
Still moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Dan, if you would.
Ted?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Motion table. Second plant, the second item is a site plan review for Mark Brothers, representing DRB Properties, seeks the planning commission's approval to renovate One South Main Street. Mark, you're here. I can see you. You need to-
You're muted.
Yeah, you're muted, Mark.
Okay, how's that?
That's good. If you'd like to give us a little input, what you want to do?
Okay. Um. The plan is, I've been gradually red redoing the building in its entirety. I think maybe some of you knew we did a complete interior renovation on the Edward Jones suite of offices. Not last year, but year before last, and last year I did the barber shop. And this year I want to do the tack shop, so the whole main level will be completely brand new in terms of interior lighting. We switched all over to LED lighting, new electric panels, wiring, the whole, the whole thing. But before I can do the tack shop, there's some things we've been looking at for quite some time. I'd like to do an exterior renovation on the property with a more or less a nod towards historical restoration towards the days when it was a Isley's. And we're going to put a new roof on the facility. And one of the issues we've dealt with over the years is the second floor, like a lot of places in town, had always been residential. You know, apartments, and then we tried some commercial and we just couldn't get anybody. It just wasn't, nobody really wanted to rent it as commercial because of the stairs. And the residential, I just don't like. I don't like mixing the residential with the commercial because you end up with, you know, noise problems, you know, somebody ever blows the tub, you know, who knows what. So as the lease has expired, I've let the second floor of the square building go empty. And now what we're looking to do is to do an exterior renovation and add a small addition, which would enable us to put in an elevator. The elevator would give us access to the second floor and I think take the second floor from pretty much non-desirable square footage to very desirable square footage. So of the plans that I gave you, that sort of shows that that addition right on the north side, if you're familiar with the building, you know, it'd be what you would call the tower. That tower, we're going to take down and that's where we want to put the addition. And and that'll open up into the second floor. I don't currently have a tenant specifically lined up for the second floor. We have shown the second floor to somebody that wants to potentially put a shared workspace and if that happened, he was looking at the entire square footage. The reason why we're looking to put in the elevator in the middle about where the tower is. I also have had Edward Jones express interest in opening up a second office for a second agent, actually Todd Hogan's son. So by putting in the middle, we could either do the entire second floor with something, or it could be split. So what we tried to do is, you know, I pulled years and pictures back from when, you know, we bought the building in the seventies to all the way back to there's a building shows up on postcards and different things to see what it looked like over the decades. And that's how we came up with the design that we basically have is sort of a mix of that historical restoration with, you know, modernizing the building. The reason why the back half of the building will look the way it is, is because that originally, when the building was built, the old Columbiana Hotel sat where the parking lot is now. And so that was built up against there, so there isn't any brick there. So when we tore down that hotel, that was all plastered with, with concrete, so we're just looking at using the elevator tower as a divider between the front half of the, you know, restoration part in the back half.
Well, I guess, what I could say is, I was impressed. It's just awesome looking. And I understand that your daughter did architectural drawings.
Yeah, that's Claire's, all Claire's work there.
It's beautiful. I, I, I was impressed.
She got her degree. What's that?
That's your documents and your renderings are the best that I've ever seen since I've been on the planning commission.
Well, she got her degree at Bowling Green in architecture and then got a three-year master's in architecture from Ohio State. She's in the process of getting ready to take her, her board test. Right now she works for a firm, which you may see on the documents called Design Collective. She's worked for them for about four years now. And and she's done really even so far in her young career, she's done work all around the country. She's done restaurants in Chicago and so I'm proud of her anyways, whether she did this or not.
Oh, it's very good.
Mark, can we share our screen and show them, show them real quick?
Absolutely.
We got them, we got them ready.
Yep. Say that, that drawing there is the the rendering, obviously from the north, say from the Square Park Avenue during the day.
So Mark, do you think that stone, that brick is behind your facade?
Say again, please.
Do you think that brick is behind what you already have covered, or you got to install that new?
From the elevator tower east or towards Main Street?
Okay.
That brick is right there. You can look at it now. It's just painted.
Okay.
And our plan is to, to soda blast, to do whatever, you know, to take it back to the original brick and then repair as necessary.
Okay.
Now that rendering, obviously, that's from Main Street side.
Mm-hmm.
That's from the north as a night view. And obviously from Main Street is a night view. You could see that the windows, we're going to take out all the double hung windows, lower the sill of the windows down closer to the floor and put in non-operable windows that are much more energy efficient, but we are gonna, you know, leave the, the muttons or the onions, as you might call them. I haven't decided whether I'm going to leave them exterior or inside the window. We have a choice there. Right now those windows shown there are pillars, but you know, that, that detail hasn't been worked out, but that's the look we're looking for. The overhangs, which you now have now is just that red metal, which I never liked.
Okay.
Is covering where you see this, the black circle with the two lines. Those are porcelain steel. That is there underneath those overhangs. Now that is the original Isley signage. So where it says tenant signage on the both sides, that actually says now Isley's.
So I, I like, Mark, how you blending in with the, the black of the streetlights the city already has. You're kind of following along with that same theme, which I think really adds to it and draws it like the building's been there forever.
Now the overhangs, if you see, we put on there. If you, if you, if you find pictures going back to say the fifties, you'll see the original building had those flat overhangs. So we're basically going back to what it was when it was built.
Yeah, no, it's beautiful.
It really is.
Any questions or comments from the commission? Other than what we've already voiced our opinion?
I agree with the rest of the committee and what many of you probably don't know is that Claire was a classmate of mine, so very exciting to see her having an impact in her hometown.
Yep.
Dan, if you would call a roll.
I would like to get a motion.
Yeah, we need a motion. I'm rushing things. I'm so excited, I'm rushing things.
Okay, Tucker made a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Now, Dan, if you call.
Okay. Scott?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item C is a replat. Mark Brothers seeks approval from planning commission to replat the properties at One South Main Street. I think we can all see what he's planning on doing and I'm sure Mark, it's basically to get your taxes straightened out or?
It's just simply that, you know, every tax season I get an envelope this thick and it's, you know, part of it's because a lot of the places we own are multiple parcels. It's something that was on the, you know, my agenda for a long time. There's actually five parcels there. We're not adding anything, buying anything, changing anything. We're just simply taking those five parcels and want to replat them into one because there really isn't obviously any reason we would ever sell or do something different with one of the other parcels. And because we were doing this, Claire wanted what, you know, what they call an alt survey to really get, you know, the the lines mapped out and stuff, so I just said, well, now's a a good time for how's embarrassed, just go ahead and do that at the same time.
Okay, any comment from the board?
I make a motion. We approve the replat as submitted.
A second.
I have a motion in a second. Dan, if you call a roll, please.
Bryce?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item is a replat. Charles Tucker Coke III seeks the planning commission's approval to replat lots 56 and 57 Parkview Drive, creating one lot 56. Tucker, before you go on here, it was like who's on first or what's on second? Because there was two of you.
Tucker's on the wrong time.
So Tucker the third.
Yep.
Let us figure out what you want to do here.
So I want to build a house, but the house I want to build has to cross the talking doggy. He said the best thing to do is to get it replatted. So got a survey done on it, talked to Chamberlain and the next step I need to take.
Okay. Any comments from the board? I have a motion to replat for Tucker. I'll make that motion to replat.
A second motion.
I have a motion in a second. Any comments from the board? Dan, if you call a roll, please.
Tucker?
I'm staying.
Rick?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Luck to you.
Last item. Item E subdivision variance. Nathan Morris received permission to build his home on Eldon Court using R2 setbacks at the August 11, 2020 planning commission meeting. He is seeking more detailed description of approval of the variance. From what I understand, this is a motion to clarify the variance previously granted by the city planning commission of that August meeting. The, I guess the title. My agency wasn't happy with our wording. I don't know, Mark, if you want to kind of enlighten us on this or?
Yeah, basically, back on August 11th, you granted a variance. From the, from discussing this with the title company, they had a couple of questions. Actually, their underwriter brought up a couple of issues based, I believe, upon a survey that was completed. We've now taken a look at this again and actually decided, all right, if we clarified what the intent of planning commission was, that it should satisfy the underwriter of the title insurance company. And basically what it's providing for is that we're varying the setback as necessary on the left side and the right side of what now is the completed structure, because I think Mr. Morris can tell you the structure is exactly where he said it was going to be. It's just that when you look at the survey drawing, which is a little bit lacking in detail that I'd like to see, it makes it appear that there's a problem with the setback. You know, Lance could add that we've actually taken another look at it, done more measurements, not me, Jesse. And it's well within where it is supposed to be, so what we want to do with this motion is just clarify what was meant by the variance and provide that to the title insurance company so that the title insurance policy can then be issued as necessary. Any questions?
Yeah, so I went out there today and looked at the setbacks, kind of where that curvature of the road to get a good view of it. And the porch, the road curves and off of Eldon Court, there's a house right in the corner. And I was kind of looking for sightlines and kind of what, what was set precedence out there. And the garage lines up on the sightline of the houses on Eldon Court. And the bump out of the porch lines up with a sightline of that house right in the corner. It's about 15 foot off the road. So I understand why we gave a variance. It follows the sightlines all the way through, so I don't see any problem with that. But I'm, I'm completely happy with the house the way it sits. And I understand why we did grant that variance.
Nothing's changed as far as our discussion from August of that time, other than
No.
they just weren't worth happy with the way we worded it.
Correct.
Gentlemen, I have an obvious interest in this as Mr. Norris's lender, so I'll be abstaining, so when this happened, when the survey come back, my desk was the first one that showed up on it, of course, my, I didn't feel good about that, so I called Mr. Heck right away. I called Danny yesterday. You know, I, I don't know what we're going to do about this. We're going to get it fixed. And I said, let's, let's check it out and so after talking with Mr. Norris and saying, let's just hold up on things and get some clarification on this. First thing I did when I went over Friday and saw he and his father, we, our stress or our focal point when, when he asked, first asked for this was the sightline, and that's the first thing I looked at and I, I agreed. There's no, no issues with the sightline. It's, it's going to look fine. So from there out, I'm done.
So can I have a motion so we can get this thing cleared up and Mr. Norris can keep pounding nails?
A motion to prove us, I, how do we do this? A motion to prove is submitted or motion to modify or clarify?
Tucker, there's a written motion that basically Ted can read the title that is the motion to clarify so that it's well within, so that it fits well within not only the sightlines, but what we intended to grant back in August. And some of the language in that motion is based upon the survey, which quite frankly, I'm not sure if the surveyor was actually on site or not, because it doesn't have lots of measurements in it. It looks a little bit more like a mortgage location survey. Scott, would you agree with that?
I couldn't disagree with it. Correct. So, but what we really need-
We, all, all we need to do is have Ted seek a motion and you can read it, Ted. Somebody will-
Can't read it.
Okay, I can, I, the title.
The title?
Yeah.
Yep.
Just, just the title, or I can read it.
Emergency to clarify previous, here's, here's the title. A motion to clarify a variance previously granted by the city of Columbiana planning commission at its August 2020 meeting. Sorry, it's a motion to clarify. Are we good with that? Or do you want, you want?
Come here to first and second?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Dan, if you would, please.
Rick?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Scott?
Abstain.
Bryce?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
And that passes and Mr. Norris, I'm sorry for any inconvenience.
No, thank you guys very much for everything. I appreciate it.
Thanks for your patience, Nathan.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I got a letter here from August. We talked about conditional uses. So he's gone back through, per your request, I completed a survey of a number of conditional use permits that are throughout the city. My findings are that there is one conditional use permit from 2012 to 2015 that still exists. A home on Lovinav, Woodland Avenue with a swimming pool where the lady that lives there gives swimming lessons. It's okay. And from 15 to present, there are three existing variances. A daycare on West Park Avenue, a dog grooming business on West Park Avenue, and the most recent, a truck repair business on Salem Street. So we have four conditional uses that are current. Just as a, for your information. So we need any public comments? Hearing none, any commission comments?
I haven't heard any complaints or seen anything problems from any of those that he's listed so far.
No.
No.
So I mean, I, I don't know if that's considered a review, you know? I mean, I would, I don't think you need to call them in if there's, if there's issues, then you take care of it. You know, basically I consider we just took care of it. But, you know.
For what it's worth, I'll agree with what Ted is saying. By checking this out, by August, actually checking how many there were, we would know if there were any complaints, and if there are no complaints, then you know, you can basically consider this to be the review. If you want to, probably could do this on an annual basis. Every May, whatever month you want to do it in, we just look at them, make sure that nobody's complained about them, because frankly, if there's a complaint, you're probably going to deal with it sooner than on an annual basis.
All right, I agree.
I know I will.
Yeah. Any other comments?
No, I think we should review them at once a year, do it in May, since we've already kind of sent something up. Put in the notes, review them once a year. It's a quick three-minute conversation, five-minute conversation, and we go on down the road.
Yeah, I was, I was surprised there was only that many.
That, I thought there was one by that Pittsburgh street right by the tracks. Maybe we didn't give him a conditional use. Maybe he fell within their requirements because it's industrial. But for some reason I thought that was, but it, maybe it wasn't, but it's good to do this. I, I thanks Augie for digging through everything and actually doing all that research. And I think we just keep a running total and check them every once in a while.
Sounds good to me. Ted, if I may? Yeah. I'd like to give your planning commission a kudos. I'm, I'm really glad to see that you talked through a lot of things and, and take genuine care
with our people within the village, well, city, I'm sorry. And boy, keep it up. Great job. And we're moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker.
I would like to comment that I really appreciate the work that Mark Brothers has done on that, on his property there on, on the Main Street Square. It's a crucial part of, part of the downtown. And I think the work that he's laid out tonight will really pay a lot of benefits into the future and will really improve that downtown area.
It's like putting up a big welcome sign.
You're exactly.
That was our, you know, one of the things I gave to Claire to think about is, I said, I want to make sure that when somebody comes south on Main Street, you know, they say, wow, not what the heck is that?
I think you did it.
Yeah. I think you accomplished that.
And if anybody, at some point here, now that we're at this stage, you know, then I can cut her loose to finish the actual drawings and then, and then we're gonna, you know, we're gonna act that we start listing the second floor to see if we might be able to get somebody where we could build the suit in the process instead of later.
Will that elevator go downstairs too, to the basement?
I originally wanted, I originally thought that's what I was going to do. Two things there. One, it adds a tremendous amount of cost in terms of the, you know, digging the pit net. And from a, an ADA standpoint, the lower level already has, you know, eighty, state, you know, approved ADA with the ramp. And the way, at least at the moment, and I, and I've still tussled that a little bit, so I'm not sure yet, but the way Amy runs things and imagine that's been there for what, twenty-five years? They're not, she doesn't really want a public entrance in the middle of her space.
Okay, I was just curious, that's all.
Yeah, but originally that's what I was going to do. And, and then I, you know, we sort of talked to her a little bit and talked to my daughter and it was like, you know, it was going to drive the cost of the elevator up maybe by as much as double and for maybe no gain.
All right, just, just a curious question is all that was.
I would like to just add that Lance Willard and I had the opportunity to tour that second floor and as he opened it up, and there's a lot of potential up there for many different types of office-based businesses. So I think it's, it's a great concept and can really work out well.
That's the plan.
Any other comments?
Only thing I saw is a Columbiana corridor sign I saw go up. I wanted to mention that. Can't wait to see that at night, one of these days driving by it. That really was high school kids, I believe, were involved in that at Columbiana High School. Very proud that they were able to put together and accomplish with some local support.
Yeah, it's the entrepreneurship class at Columbiana High School. And they did a heck of a lot of work and unfortunately the because of the weather and things that we were going through, the actual construction of what's going to take place on, on the, in the alley won't be done for, what do you think, Lance, a month or so? So, but I think it's really going to be exciting when it gets done. And it was great to collaborate, the city collaborating with the school district. And I think it was really a good project.
Yeah, and I will point out that Comco Industries donated that, that, that sign and there's a couple, there's a memory in memory of plaque for Clarence Smith. And we were really proud to host that unveiling today and Comco was there to represent. And also Mrs. Smith was there with her family and it was very, very moving.
But I, I think the key that we want to say is Comco Industries built it, but the students really developed, they polled their students to get a name for the alley. That was done by the high school students and Comco designed that sign based on the students' recommendations and, and work. So it was a good project.
Yeah, it'll have seating for thirty-two, thirty-two individuals throughout. It'll have a water fountain. It'll have two fire pits. And it already has a chalkboard and it's going to have a sixty-five inch, like we'll call it a, a monitor to you know, show different things. You are here and menus and such, and we're going to work through that and that should happen in the next thirty days.
If I may add something, you know, there is a, a commendable thing. We can take every one of those brick and mortar stores that we have uptown and we invite them out, let's shut the street down. And let's talk about that and let's pride ourselves and give the kudos to everyone that's up there because they're all a part of it. So just a suggestion. A motion to adjourn? Somebody wants to quit.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Good night, all.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.